So I'm just gonna let him sweat now. Just not take it for a week.
Well, I'd like a little bit more out of the.
Well, if you don't tell me how much, that's exactly what you're gonna get.
Forty-five hundred and one dollars.
It might come with some manual labor, I would think.
Yeah. Yeah, there you go. And it's worth two weeks' holiday.
Yeah. Sweat, I agree. Yeah, absolutely. You're inside a minute there, Tom, so.
Yeah, it's seven o'clock, so we must have called a meeting to order. Everybody have a copy of the agenda? There was an item that was added today, but it was sent out earlier, the four point six. So, um, somebody wish to move the agenda, Judy? That's presented. Any discussion on Judy's motion? Hearing now, call the questions in favor. Posed, seen now, it's carried. Okay, moving on to the regular council minutes of July twenty eighth. Any questions, errors, missions? Not entertain motions? Richard? Any discussion on Richard's motion? Hearing now, call the questions in favor. Posed, seen now, it's carried. Thank you. Moving on to the library board appointment. Request.
So everybody's had a chance to look at the report. Uh, there's just a, uh, a one-year appointment for Deborah Wyatt, and that's just to keep her place. She's currently a treasurer, just needs to, uh, wants to do a one-year term, just to finish that up. And then, uh, they sent a second request right after the first one for, uh, the appointment of Joy Drills to a three-year term. So, full slate of representatives again.
Okay. Barbara?
I'd like to make the recommendation that council approves the reappointment of Deborah Wyatt to the Vulcan Municipal Library Board for a one-year term ending August eleventh, two thousand twenty-six. And the council approves the appointment of Joy Drills to the Vulcan Municipal Library Board for a three-year term ending August eleventh, two thousand twenty-eight.
Okay, any discussion on Barbara's motion? Hearing now, call the questions in favor. Posed, seen now, it's carried. Okay, the municipal accountability program.
So this was probably a little bit bigger of a reading for, for y'all. And, uh, we went through it again. You can see the amount of stuff and the information that they pulled from down the way through. Uh, I gave you a quick update at my last C A O report that we finished everything that was on the list. They give us eight weeks to reply on how we're gonna address everything on the list and then a year to address everything. So as it stands, I've already sent the bylaw to them and everything else that you can see is just procedural stuff. It doesn't need motion from council. So, um, what I did is they request an action list. So I put together a short ass action list. Everything has been completed, so I'm not anticipating anything back from. Unless there was some questions from council about anything in the report. It is, it is very thorough and you can see.
Seventy-three pages.
Yeah, last, the first time we went through this, uh, four years ago, uh, they identified four, thirteen things on that. So the fact that we're down to five, and they were all procedural things that are very easily addressed. Speaks volumes, I think.
I'd like to make the recommendation that council directs administration to submit the required municipal accountability review, uh, response plan to municipal affairs, including the action item report showing that all areas deemed as non-compliant have been addressed.
Okay, any discussion on Barbara's motion? Hearing now, call the questions in favor. Posed, seen now, it's carried now. Moving on to Stu's request.
So as you know from the planning session, uh, we were to replace a grader mower this year. Stu wanted to get the majority of the season through that mower, uh, being that it was in pretty decent shape. And so he put out, put together documentation, put it out for sealed bid from, uh, local, companies that could provide the, the mowers. We did the summary, as you can see, it really comes down to trade value, that sort of thing. Forty-eight inch deck is, uh, probably the most economical option, but moving up to the fifty-four, which everybody, uh, quoted to is, is gonna, you know, again, that little bit extra. The only place we're worried about that is, uh, in the cemetery, between some of the headstones, that sort of thing. But Stu feels that they're gonna give it a try and, uh, and perhaps at the price point that we're at now, uh, with some of our big mowers, if we can, we only run sixty-inch decks on those, seventy-two, so it might be an option to look at, uh, buying these smaller mowers and do the same amount in the future, so. Anyway, uh, we did the review. He's requesting, uh, that council consider the fifty-four inch deck from John Deere. Yeah, we currently have thirty-eight thousand dollars held in reserve for purchase for the purchase of this.
Okay, Richard?
I'll make the recommendation that council approve the purchase of a new John Deere X-seven thirty-five M fifty-four inch zero turn mower from Brad's tractor in Vulcan at the, for the quoted price of twelve thousand four hundred and ninety-five, with the funds to be drawn from the common services capital reserve.
Great, thank you. Any discussion on Richard's motion? Hearing now, call the questions in favor. Posed, seen now. Okay, C A O evaluation.
Due to it, uh, obvious reasons, due to it being an election year and, uh, the, I, I, I know that some of you are running again, but, uh, it's kind of unfair to new councillors that are only on the job for a month to try to do an evaluation. So on election years, we always, uh, ask if council would be considered giving my evaluation prior to their last meetings, so.
Yeah, we kind of discussed it a little bit and hopefully everybody's on board with that. Again, exactly what Kim said, we just didn't feel it was fair to ask a couple of new councillors that have no, um, experience on, on council to, to do it. They'll get their, their chance to do, you know, four of their own or three of yours, so.
Well, I, I think the person I'd be most unfair to is Kim.
Well, you know, and, and again, I, you know, I, I think that it's, it's something that's, it's important. Kim, Kim really does, we do this three sixty, which, you know, is a huge discussion, whether it's a pro or con. And maybe that's another issue that we need to bring up or, you know, needs to be come up with a new council, i- is the evaluation. But, um, the advantages and disadvantages of it, but, um, we just feel that, you know, there's a, a pattern we've had with Kim and, and, and the previous councils and maybe as, you know, administrators to keep that method going. And I know it's painful for some, some take the real strong effort of filling in every blank, which is much appreciated, but, you know. So if that's agreeable, we would, you know, move forward with that call.
I'd like to make the recommendation that council directs the mayor to conduct a three-sixty performance evaluation on the chief administrative officer with support from the legislative clerk Karen Rose, the result of the evaluation being reported back to the town council on September twenty-second regular meeting.
Okay, any discussion or question on this? Not, no, call the question in favor. Okay, it's carried, thank you. And the next one, which is Will's favorite, uh, that's C A O vacation.
And really because council, uh, council's the second meeting of August, so you can have a little bit of summer break. I try to coordinate my holidays to correspond with that, so, uh, just requesting the last two weeks, August, not to spend some time with my family before the kids go back to school.
Will?
I will make the recommendation that council approve the chief administrator, this administrative officer's request for vacation leave from August eighteenth, twenty twenty-five through to September second, twenty twenty-five, I guess.
Thank you, Will. It, it's still on the floor, so.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on Will's motion? Hearing now, we'll call the questions in favor. Posed, seen now, it's carried now. Thank you. Okay, moving on to this one, the tax recovery one that was added on a little bit late, but, uh, we want to get it on, so.
Yeah, and really this is more about the timing. Uh, we need to advertise this for ninety days. Uh, we do have a couple of properties that will be going up for tax auction if they're not cleared up before that, that date. And, uh, mo- most likely, we're gonna see these ones cleared. Uh, there's possibly one that, uh, that will go to full auction, but. So in order for us to do that, Theresa said why we added it late. Theresa was gonna add it to our second meeting in August, which we don't have, so. So I, uh, sent out the email and requested that it be added for this evening. And the motion stands the same, uh, that, uh, that you keep the reserve bid, that when that be subbed in.
Okay, Judy?
I'll make the recommendation that council directs administration to hold a public auction sale for all parcels of land shown on the tax arrears list, if the tax arrears are not paid as per section four eighteen of the municipal government act on November seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, and that the reserve bid be set at not less than the market value of these properties as determined by a professional appraiser prior to the auction taking place as per policy A O five, and that the condition of the sale be cash or certified check.
Great, thank you. Any questions on Judy's, go ahead now.
All right, just for, I guess, administrative thing, just, so anybody watching, like, where will this, will this be posted on your utility bills? Like our monthly utility bills and on the website, I'm assuming?
We post it on the website, we post it on our, we have to post it on our local board. It'll be advertised in the Edmonton News-App and, uh, the tax help happens here in the office. So we, uh, we put notice out for that on social media as well.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Yeah, it's important because, I mean, you used to have to advertise it in the paper, in the paper. It's, it's great for these stuff, makes it kind of hard, so. Okay, so we have a motion for this from Judy for the November the seventeenth of twenty twenty-five for this tax help. We need to see if they're not paid arrears, so. Any discussion on Judy's motion? Hearing now, call the question in favor. Posed, seen now, it's carried now. Okay, moving on to committee reports. Judy's good enough to get, make sure that Marcus Foundation one is there for July twenty-four, or June twenty-four, I'm sorry, and July twenty-fifth, so.
The draft was.
The draft was. There is one spelling error, um, eight point one, and I've already fixed it and sent it to the chair and the C A O, so.
Appreciate that.
I put K in front of N O.
Okay, so there's the two of them and we can, uh, you know, I know Judy's spoken to them or, you know, but, uh, we can move them both together.
Can just, uh, be filed, uh?
Yeah, filed, yeah, filed, uh, sorry, committee reports, somebody wish to. Okay, Miles, pick a lot of it's. Any discussion on Miles's motion? Hearing now, call the question in favor. Posed, seen now, it's carried. Now, so you. Thank you. Now we'll move on to councillor Magnuson.
I'd like to thank Tom for going in my place of the flying club committee, the flying club meeting. When I was away, uh, I guess there was a quorum, so it didn't happen. I had no other meetings, uh, since our, since the last meeting I was at, last council meeting. Uh, but I did have a, a nice call from a, a ratepayer the other day, uh, thanking the town for doing the, uh, veterans crosswalk. And they were quite impressed with that. And I see they, they got the lead with the rate and stuff, but it looks like they finished that up today. So that was really well done. Um, I did meet with another ratepayer who had, uh, was a victim of a dog attack and, uh, a little bit of concern there. Myself was, uh, hit the next day by those dogs and made a report. And it's unfortunate that that happens because there's a lot of people that don't, won't go out walking because of people with dogs of large. Which is an interesting thing because when I was in Glasgow, Scotland, everybody's got a dog, but none of them are off-leash. People are, maybe it's because they have such close quarters that people take better, more responsibility for them. So I just thought I'd bring that to attention, but otherwise I didn't have anything else to, any other meetings.
Any questions for Larry? Not, thank you, councillor DeWolff.
Did the skate club meeting on, I think it was the thirtieth, if I remember right, with Chris and Kim and Tom. Interesting, uh, conversation to listen to. Also did the Strathmore parade on the first, I think it was, of August. Actually, it was a lot of fun. Thank you, Judy, for giving me a ride home because my wife and my daughter, they headed north, so. It was good, we had a good time. It was, uh, a big parade, to say the least. Um, that, that was about it.
Okay, any questions for Richard? Not councillor Snick?
I have nothing to report.
Okay, any questions for Will?
Why don't you have nothing?
No, thank you, councillor Sanderson.
On July twenty-ninth, um, Marcus Foundation minutes were sent here. Uh, total cost to date that Marcus has spent on the lodge is four hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars and eighty-four cents. That includes our C M H D C funding. And so out of the six hundred thousand that Marcus put in personally as a, um, board, we have two hundred and ninety thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars and sixteen cents left in this budget. So at this point, the lodge is not moving forward until we make some changes. So, um, I will speak to that just a little bit further down here because I got some more information. Uh, we have received our debrief from Erin Hill Washington, and she's, uh, in her team with the housing helping program. So we are meeting with them, uh, this week on August fourteenth. So we have questions to ask, but if they're not looking at us until we have a waiting list, then why are we spending the money to do this? And we were told by David Williams, no, it didn't all, it didn't just rely on the waiting list, but obviously it does. And so why are we spending meals and spending money? So we will find out more this week from Erica, hopefully. And as noted, uh, Marcus, uh, Foundation is thankful that the town, that we already have left those mansions up for the sign because there is hope still in the future. It might not be for the next couple of years, but, um, we will be looking at this again and we're looking at ways to maybe we can, can help that. So we have discussed potentially, just as a board and nothing, it's just talk of what we can do to get a waiting list on here. So when you go in, you know, the first hallway you come to and there's the outside windows and the inside windows. If we take that hallway out and just make it one long narrow room out of four, so there's, that would be eight rooms made into four. Then, because right now we're, we're up about thirty-three, I think, residents. So we are climbing, but they have noticed that there's been a bit more mental health issues with people who are on the inside and never get to the outside. So this is just some options that we're looking at. So after we talk to Erica, this is something that, you know, we'll see if there's a, because there was talk of a, renovation, I don't know if that's what they called it, fund to help get your inside done. So it's not, it's, there are options that we can get, so we can get to this point. We feel like it's throwing good money out to bad to get it full, so that we can build, but sometimes you gotta do what you gotta do and you gotta make the people comfortable that are living there now, so. We did have Doug, Doug Hendrick look at it, Hed, Hedrick.
Hedrick.
I would say at home, Hedrick, uh, to see if there was any safety, fire safety concerns of taking that hallway out. That he didn't see any at this point, and it was just kind of a quick makeover, so. We'll see going forward what's happening. On September second, not first, we went to the Strathmore parade.
You mean August?
Oh, August.
He's not down there right now.
Both got it wrong, oh.
Both got it wrong. August second, we went and it was, and it was a really good day, it was lightning on the way over, but it was a beautiful day for a parade, so turned out really good. Um, this last weekend, the Vulcan Golf Course Center Club Championships, if you haven't heard, Scott Scobie won the men's and Morgan Magnuson, um, won the, the ladies. And, uh, this is an off note, Karen came in second. So it was a good weekend, they closed course for just members and if you choose not to go in it, you're missing out on two days of golf in eighteen holes each day for twenty-five bucks, so only costs to the members, so. It's good.
Okay, any questions for Judy? Thank you, Barbara, who are copies?
Um, I have nothing, I've been away.
Okay, any questions for Barbara? If not, thank you, councillor Dunham.
Uh, no official meetings, um, I had Kim give me a hand answering some questions for Futerville. That's about it. Also a sports update, my slow pitch team beat Will's on Sunday. The D, the D final. Right, well, there is that clock worthy, yeah.
Okay, any questions for councillor Dunham? Okay, well, thank you. Yeah, after me, us, and after I sent out that, uh, I wasn't gonna attend the skin club meeting, um, Kim and I had a little bit of a discussion and so I did go, Richard was there, we just kind of sat as, um, flowers on the wall. And, uh, there was two county councillors that were here and, uh, some of the questions that were directed and answered, I think. It's, uh, it was a, a good opportunity to see how exciting we could have our facility if, uh, it was run different maybe. But anyway, um, we did the attendance and then I had an August, uh, first, uh, Seawall meeting and at, at that meeting, um, there was a bit of a discussion on what we needed to do to move forward on this project. And then I did attend the, um, August the second parade in Strathmore. And, uh, like, um, Richard said and Judy said, it was well attended by, you know, um, us and, and, uh, it was a good, good turnout to, for the parade itself. I, we ran, I ran into the lady that, uh, drives the float from the Calgary and they, they were just talking about other parades that they go to and which ones they don't. And they try and do something similar to what, uh, we're doing, you know, try and pick and choose which ones are, you know, that get, you know, good bang for the buck, but yet not. They, they won't go to Banff anymore. They just find it's too, uh, tight and, and it's not, um, as easy to get around in Banff with those many people that they have. So they said it's great for publicity, but it's, it's really a hard one to get into because they bring their, their float inside a forty-five foot trailer. And so, you know, finding a place to park it in Banff, she says, it's just too inconvenient, but. Anyway, um, then we had a Seawall meeting on the fifth and the, um, we had this Ruben from Global Green and also this John from Global Green, who is this, John's lives in Strath, in, in Chestmere. And since they brought him and his partner, their philosophy has changed a little bit and they wanted to open the M O U and we, you know, negotiated through there. And so there's a bit of turmoil going on right now, you know, because, um, this Global Green has made a side deal with, um, the, uh, group out of, um, Weet, um, Liam County, or I mean, out of, out of Newell, I should say, Newell Solid Waste. They made this side deal with them and it's created some really, really hard feelings. And so we're trying to deal with that and then we had another meeting again today. I, I, I did that one on the way to, to Saskatchewan, so I just did it from the phone. And so we had to, it fell off three or four times, but I had to kind of, I was going west, e- east and I had to go north to get better self-service and then, but anyway, um, I wasn't very nice, um, because I just lost my demeanor over how this side deal was done and how they had made this deal and never shared any of the side dealing that was going on until they signed the papers, which is really kind of disappointing that one municipality, you know, jives and dives the knife into the other municipality because of something that's been going on. Anyway, so then we had a meeting today with the executive and there was a huge discussion again too about, you know, since Newell wants out, you know, maybe it's time to kick them out and let them go their own way. But, you know, after sitting and, and my daughters keep on telling me, you know, dad, you need to learn how to forgive and forget and move on and, and I've been really working hard on that moving on, I'll never forget. And I'm, I'm really working hard on forgiving, um, because, you know, if you don't forgive, you know, there's no healing there. And, but I need to move on and maybe this is an opportunity to move on, on this project for them. They, they believe that they're gonna get a, a deal with Global Green. They put up, uh, five hundred thousand dollars of their own money and, uh, and, um, they're willing to raise the tipage. And so that's why Global Green wants to renegotiate the, the, the M O U. And I'm saying personally is that we signed this M O U in good faith and they need to uphold their end of the good faith part of the M O U. But again, um, so again, I'm trying to move on, move on, move on. So we had that meeting today, it was about an hour and a half long. So it's, Seawall, we were, we were told when we started Seawall years ago, you know, when we had sixteen municipalities together, that we would never make it because, you know, the knives come out, you know, this is not a marriage. This is a relationship between municipalities and towards the end that it's not gonna happen. You can't get this many people together in a room and get along that well for as long as we have. So, um, it's just showing, showing that, you know, and, and it's disappointing to see. I say that, that, you know, there, there's Kool-Aid being spilt and poured around, but it's, it's tainted. And it's, it's really sad to see that, you know, people are willing to drink this tainted Kool-Aid and throw the daggers and stuff and not see what the advantage is of what's going on. Judy?
So the, the plant was always gonna be built in the whole county, is that correct?
Originally, they were gonna build a three hundred thousand ton plant and now they've come up with a method of coming up with eighty thousand tons. But Newell County themselves can only come up with, well, I shouldn't say Newell County, Newell Solid Waste can only come up with forty thousand tons of their own. They have not gone out to see if any of the rest would send their waste. They just wanna be their own, you know, the mentality of that, you know, we wanna keep it to ourselves.
So then why would the Global Green make a deal with one community that doesn't have the tipage they need and send the whole?
Because, because in their M O U, it stated that we had to have eighty thousand tons, but they only got forty. And they, they were gonna fund it a hundred percent. So now, Newell Solid Waste has come up with a deal for only forty thousand tons, but they're putting up five hundred thousand dollars, up to a million dollars of their own money to, to bring this plant in. So, um, the deal was made between, a side deal was made because that's not what the M O U said.
So Seawall did all this work and then Newell's gonna come in and benefit from it.
And you said they're gonna up the tipage as well?
They're gonna up their tipage. So it went from, you know, I, I use the fictitious figure of twenty thousand dollars a ton because it's in American dollars, non-on. Twenty dollars, they're, they're willing to pay up to fifty dollars a ton for it, which is still cheaper than what it is for them. It is, you know, because some of them were, some municipalities are paying up to a hundred and twenty dollars a ton. So, but we signed the deal, we made the agreement. They originally, Global Green wanted a five-year exclusive rights only to Seawall and we had them talk it down to two years to make it fairer for everybody else. And then they made a side deal. And, and personally, I believe it's that they brought in this one partner. I believe this one partner has a different, um, philosophy than the general, the fellow that from Global Green originally. You know, so anyway, it's, it's just one of those ones where you kind of go back and say, mm, you know, that, you know, you just see this all happening all over the world and, you know, in a way, it's, it's just sad that we have this happen that we, you know, can't get along and, you know, good enough to make a project move forward. There's always somebody that thinks that they can do it better on their own or, and, anyway. So it, the project's not dead, it's just changed its dynamics and, and, you know, Global Green still says that they're still interested in building a plant in, uh, O Valley. And they still believe that they, you know, like, we have kind of made a deal with five or six municipalities in the, the Leftbridge area and we can come up with the eighty thousand tons, you know. I mean, it's just that Newell Solid Waste decided that they didn't need anybody else, they could do it all on their own. And they're gonna cost their, take great pairs, a million bucks plus higher tipage.
Was Newell County part of, uh, the M O U originally?
Yes, they said.
So they're in breach of that?
Yes.
So legally?
Yeah, legally, there's ways that, and, and I think, but again, you know, that's where the, the move on part of the. on part of the, you know, I'll never forget that, the breach. I'll forgive them for, you know, only representing their municipality and having their blinders put on so tight that, you know, that's where I think they drank this Kool-Aid from other municipalities that said that, you know, you should be signing this MOU. But that's up to them, you know, I mean, they have to represent their repairs the best way they believe that they should, and I believe that they're doing a poor job of it, but, but on the other hand, you know, that's up to them, and, and so I wanna move on and say thank you very much, you know, do your own thing. And it just makes it, you know, it's just very disappointing, you know. And so there was, you know, again, on the August 5th, when I was going to Saskatchewan, I wasn't very nice on the phone call, because I just sat there and listened to all of this stuff, and then I just lost it for about how many miles that I ran to go on. But it is just disappointing to think that municipalities go together and work together for a common goal, and then philosophies change, and, you know, and the next thing you know, you're thrown under the bus, or you're whatever analogy you wanna put, and then you have to fight your way back, and then they still wanna be your friend and your buddy, and move on, Tom, move on. So it's been a, you know, I understand exactly what Judy said, you know, you go to all this work and effort, and now we're fortunate, we've done a lot of, spent a lot of money on engineering, all the money that we've spent on engineering and all that stuff has come from grants. So we didn't take anybody's personal money, but most of us have put in hundreds of thousands of hours, the same as what you guys have done, Judy, of time and effort, and, you know, we've got members that have donated, personally, you know, we have one member that donated $10,000 out of his own pocket to make the project move forward. And, you know, it's just kind of a slap in the face, just because, you know, I can do it without you, and no matter what, but, you know, they'll never hit the 80,000 tons. And Medicine Hat even said they would come on, and they even offered to pay a membership to join so that they could get in on it. And Newell Solid Waste have said, no, we're gonna do our own thing, and, and so I just listen to this all the time, and where one municipality believes that we don't need the other municipalities, and we're gonna go on our own and do our own thing, certain areas have to say thank you very much. Move on, Tom, move on. Any other questions? Okay, if not, we need a motion to move on from this one.
I'll make the motion that we move on.
Thank you very much. Any discussion on Richard's motion for any of our reports? If not, all questions in favor posed, seen none, that's carried to the House. Okay, moving on to activity list, which Kim and Karen have graciously put up for us.
Unless you have any questions about the first one, we've accomplished everything from the last meeting, so go right into my CAO report. Been very busy just wrapping some things up, working with Reedham County for fire response times for Superior Safety Month, we think we got that actually wrapped up today, so that's looking good. Had some conversations with the Waste Authority about recycling program, he provided an updated and helps provide that information at council as well, so. Did a lease assignment consent for the Carling Club, that was done, followed up on the maps, met with the developer consultant in Orsk for the conceptual scheme, and we're hoping to bring that to this meeting, but there's a few things that Orsk wants to address in there as well, so Carl's taking that back, and let's do the amendments now, so we're planning on bringing that to the September meeting. Started providing information, Orsk, through the GIS, provided all the different layers of our GIS to CMA Plus, and they're gonna all relate with the maps that they have to be on, like the infrastructure master plan. Attended all the webinars for the election coming up, and they just sent on a bunch of changes again today, so, you know, the only one that really impacts us that I gotta keep an eye on is they changed the rules on opening, that if we don't have enough nominations, we used to have to open every day until we had enough nominations, and then if anybody, if you had more than enough, anybody could withdraw, but they couldn't withdraw less than the ones you require. So now they've changed the rule that you could, you could withdraw anytime in that 24 hours, and you could put in less than what's required. And if you don't have enough on that day, you have to open it for all five days, so it's not just as soon as you feel that you're done. So I'll just keep an eye on that, I'll just make sure that the red hot lots line up, so I don't think that that'll matter on September 22nd, so. And so I'm just trying to keep an eye on that. The meeting with the skate club went very well, basically what everybody there confirmed that, you know, Chris does that scheduling, will work with them, the skate club was unaware of some movements in the times that he had looked for, because they had asked for that meeting and asked him to stop communicating with, he had forgotten now to, I believe, four times that we're impacted. So it was a good meeting, because everybody kinda heard it all together, and I think that at the end of the day, everybody's aware that there's, you know, one person with the impossible job of trying to make every user group happy. When you have the same facility with the same amount of ice times for everybody, eventually somebody's not happy, especially as it gets busier. So we're working at that now, keeping the priority for our user groups and determining that. So overall, it went very well, it wasn't an overly long meeting, it was nice to have councillors present, but short of a few questions, they left it to Chris and I to put that together, so it went very well. And inside that, we had some community member inquiries that are kinda interesting, I'm hearing, golf course with carts on the roads again, it's come up, but the RCMP are keeping an eye on that. So as everybody knows, golf carts aren't allowed on the roads, and there is a pilot project with the province to see, but that's, they've already named the municipalities that have been doing it, and it's a five-year project, it's in year two, I believe. And so legally, carts aren't supposed to be on the road, so that's really in the RCMP's discretion, because they have their provincial jurisdiction on all our roads, so. We had some trees, obviously you guys saw the emails with flags, those sort of things, I was able to address those very quickly, and didn't get a response from any of them, so, from the council.
Just say you did very good job.
Yeah, I deleted it, and he answered.
He answered you?
No, he answered, but I just deleted it.
That is very good.
Yeah, and really, for a lot of folks, just the educational side of it, the history side, you know, if you moved to town a year ago and the flat gets up, you don't know why it's up, so, and I think sometimes just the background helps folks understand what's going on.
And I also found the timing of the email interesting as well, if somebody was really serious about it, would you really send the email at 10:30 at night on Friday of a long meeting?
I, there's some, you know, and to that, you know, one of those things was the media pride and the amount of flags that are being flown in our community, and I couldn't, I didn't put in the response, but I kinda thought perhaps maybe some people that are offended in our community by some of the flags, the anti-Canada flags that are being flown around our communities, perhaps should be addressed as well. And I know we've been doing that through our bylaw, but as a citizen, if those are the kind of things that offend you, then have a conversation with that community of
But I will say this, I think anybody can fly whatever they want, it's their right. And I, you know, whether I agree or disagree, I still agree with the fact that you have the right, you know, that's my thought.
Yeah, that's why you delete them.
Yeah. So unless there's any other questions on mine, you both had a chance there, so.
Okay, any questions for Kim on either of those two documents for him? Okay, if not, we will move on to the number officers.
I just wanna, Reed has put a tremendous amount of time into this building code issue with the fire response times, so it's consumed a fair amount of her time going back and forth between useful affairs, fire department, inspectors, all those things, so. And you may have, as councillors, heard from some of our developers in our community, because it is impacting some of this, that potentially, right now, they're afraid to move forward, don't get a definitive answer, hopefully, again, we'll have one for tomorrow.
Okay, any other questions on Reed's? Okay, none, public works.
Stu's bit pretty straightforward, the roof on the arena was done, as some of you should probably saw, on the south side, they had some bubbling, they came in on the weekend, finished the north side, repaired the bubbling, and of course, due to moisture and weather we've had, they've cut it off, it does, it is discolored, they're hoping it'll blend, but it may be discolored, ready to get those patches. But other than that, they do have it sealed now. It's done.
Okay, anything else on Stu's? If not, we will move on to Community Services.
It's a lot of information in here, so Volcon was very successful.
Yeah, I think we had that question at the last meeting about Volcon, and so the numbers are in there, so.
It's very good.
It's really nice in a month to see 3,000 people go through the doors or in the center, you know, that's, for a small town, that's huge. I answered an email actually today about the numbers, and from a business owner, about the impact of Volcon.
Okay, any questions on Chris's? Now we'll move on to our services.
It's nice to have a summer without fire bans every year, it's awesome. It'd be nice for the firefighters to, when I was getting eaten by mosquitoes all weekend, I wish you're cussing about it.
Okay, any questions on Doug's? Not, we'll move on to my one.
Significant amount of dog issues we've had to last a while. Again, convincing people that dogs should be on leashes and contained in their yards, the majority of them are escaping from yards, which is, again, owner's responsibility, pet owner's responsibility.
Is it the same dogs biting?
No.
No, there's numerous kinds?
There's different ones.
Are you allowed to carry bear spray? Can you do that? You can't? How do you protect yourself if you wanna go on the walk and back?
You can buy stuff that's not called bear spray, but it is, you can buy a spray that will deter.
We'll talk later, you can just tell me where to get that.
You have to fill out a whole form for bear spray.
It's a little nerve wracking, if your granddaughter is walking and you don't know, you don't know.
You can get it on Amazon. I would just carry bear spray.
It is very disappointing, that it's not the dog, really, it's the owner's responsibility.
Yeah, it's the owner you should be spraying in the eye. They're beating with the stick, there's people who are on the sticks now, because
And Jennings is spending more time actually trying to patrol because of that, because the fines, those sort of things don't seem to be deterrent, which will bring it back in the rates and fees by law, that perhaps our fines need to be significantly increased to make it a deterrent.
Well, either that, or do you have a, you know, how many times do you fine before you say the dog's, you know, gonna get the needle kind of deal? I mean, because if that's up, you know, the owner's not gonna take care of it.
Yeah, that's the sad part, too, is that, you know, it makes it bad for the good dog owner that accidentally their dog gets out, or their animal gets out, or that, you know, gets away on the leash, you know, and it makes it sad for that one, when there is ones that seem to stub their nose at the system and think that they're above the...
And that's what we talked, because we do have a tiered system, first, first offense, second offense, third offense, and it's probably keeping the first where it's at, but making the third, second, third, way more substantial.
And again, you know, I appreciate what Richard says on that, but it is hard to, you know, where you draw the line, you know, I mean, it's, you know, it's, Willie, uh...
Is there no, like, legal ramifications if someone is bit by a dog, you can't sue the owner, or is there anything?
Yeah, so the peace officers, so the RCMP and the county with jurisdiction within the town, they can charge under the Animal Patrol Act, but of course, that all has to be documented and proven, so that's why Channing's been working with the RCMP on every one of these calls that involves somebody that has been attacked.
I think a dog's entitled to one bite, because you don't know when it bites until it bites once. And it used to be that way in the Canadian Code, and that's the way it was for years, I don't know if that's...
And the Animal Patrol Act does not allow for that.
Any bite?
No.
Good.
It's just, like I said, it's really disappointing that the numbers have gone up, but, you know, it could be just coincidental, and hopefully, it'll mend itself and get rid of it, but, but it just seems though there's, there's more people with animals, and unfortunately, it's, you know, there are some people that just should never have even had a, you know, an animal because of the way they just are delinquent in their, in their activities, but yet they seem to think that they need to have three, you know, or four.
Well, the one thing that we find is on the attack side, that it very rarely happens when they're on leash, so that's more of the education side, why Channing's trying to do, when he's able to get out and do patrol, because if you see somebody walking their dog off-leash, he can then have that conversation, you know, do you know, rather than trying to deal with it after the fact. Once, certain people, good, like Tom said, the good owners, you only have to remind them once.
And the sad thing, too, that, you know, is with this, too, is that it really affects our anticipation of how much time Channing or the system is going to allocate towards that. Now, all of a sudden, we get this spike, then the numbers of the workload is changed from what it could have been or should have been to what it is now, and it just affects everything, so.
This is a perfect example for, you know, for July, which we're very, very busy with camps, those sort of things, where Channing's probably, you know, half of his time is bylaw, and half of his time is recreation side. With these complaint files, he feels overwhelmed with the workload, because, you know, something that we shouldn't, you know, shouldn't have to deal with, dogs off-leash, should maybe one or two files, but you can see, you know, 11 dog conflicts and 18 dogs at large, like, that's a huge amount in a single month.
Well, to me, at this rate, it's not a matter of if, it's when, there's gonna be a major incident of, you know, maybe even a fatality, or a kid severely injured or whatnot, so that's why we're involved in the RCMP, all of those files.
So just, you know, again, I think we just need to kinda go back and mentally think about, you know, when we hear these complaints or see these complaints somewhere, that we can see the numbers and justify the method that we're trying to do, and maybe like Kim says, it'll come back in the fall when we do our...
Reallocate some time.
...allocate some time, or reallocate even the funding, you know, and I hate to do this, too, because, you know, again, you know, we've got some good dog or animal owners in our community, and sometimes they're the ones that pay the price, you know, all of a sudden, you raise the price of the dog tag, or, or an animal tag, and then the next thing you know, it's, they're saying, well, I'm not gonna register my animal, but then, I mean, it's a catch 22, and I think that education is important, but yet, some of them, like, you know, the stick beating on them doesn't help, need to put the nail in it, doesn't help, you know, you have to go even more severe than that with some animal owners that... Need to put the nail and it doesn't help, you know, you have to go even more severe than that with some animal owners that
Unfortunately, the people that are paying attention to the the not teaching, what is, what was the word?
The education.
The education side of it, there's probably the people that are causing the problems.
No, no, I I think that's right. I I think that, you know, Kim said, you know, the odd one that their dog gets away on them or their animal gets away on them. You know, they're all really worried about it and they're trying to do their best, other ones seem to care less. It's almost like
That brings up the point about fines, because you just mentioned something about raising rate and everybody that's that takes care of their animals is paying for that.
Right.
The fine side is where you have to hit them, but we'll just allude it to the people, if they don't care, I mean, to them, if unless it's a prize dog, do they bite the fine or just say, take the dog?
And we've had that as well.
You know, and then again, too, you know, our whole system gets downloaded and overloaded with all these other issues and and something has to pay, you know, has to pay the price either time-wise or or or, you know, staff-wise or whatever. So it's, if you hear somebody that is, has concerns or about it, you know, we can explain, try and explain to them that, you know, we're trying to work through this with a proper procedures and it's not easy. Okay, anything else on Jennings? Okay, if not, we will look at
I can just say good job, it's not an easy one.
Need a motion to file with Lyle?
Motion to file the administrative report, I was getting ready.
Okay, any discussion on Lyle's motion? Any non-called questions, favor, opposed, seen, none, carried, so no closed meeting, so what would you like to miss with? I just asked him to re-respond.
Make the motion do adjourn?
Okay. Well, moves that we adjourn, any discussion on those motions? Seen, none, non-called question, favor, we are officially adjourned. Just, well, we, before we leave too, is that we've got two parades